Nancy, just let me know when everybody who you think is coming has joined.
Sorry, we have a quorum. You can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, December 6th, and I would like to call the meeting to order. Nancy, would you take the role, please?
Sure. Kate Townley?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Here.
Judy Brown?
Here.
Kate Fuller is absent. Noel Atkins is absent. Carl Adams?
Here.
Brenda Hubka?
Here.
And I do not see Erin. Chair Austin?
Here.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you all. We have a quorum. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes from the November 15th, 2022, Plan and Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Hold on, Brenda has a question.
Yes, I have a question about finding a fact and the minutes. I didn't see the minutes posted. I only saw the finding of fact. Are the minutes posted? Oh, yes, they are. Okay, I'm sorry about that. No, I can't see them. There's a there's a compass login, and let me tell you why I'm asking. It's because I was wondering if we list the names of the citizens who testified. And because some of the one of the persons who gave testimony as the residence on South Pan doesn't actually live there. It's actually they own the property. They've got a renter there. It's actually not their property. And I was also asked on the Nextdoor forum for like a list, and I just told them to go to the video, but I also said that the minutes would be available and that they should list those people.
Yeah, the 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 people who were sworn in and testified are listed in the minutes with the address that they provided.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And if they if they don't actually live there, do we need to make a motion about that? Or does it even it doesn't matter? Because she said she resides on that Le Pan address, but she doesn't. She actually, there's a renter there, but she owns it. I mean, she's the landlord. Does that how critical do we how, you know, serious does the city take this kind of stuff?
Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to go with the testimony that was given. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thanks. That's all I want to know. I'll make a motion to approve then.
Chair, I have a point of order. Do we have public forum is usually before minutes?
Public forum on my printout is number six.
Okay, never mind. I got moved. That's my fault.
It's okay. Let's get through the minutes, and then if we have people from the public, I'm happy to move them up if the commissioners agree.
Okay, so I have minutes moved by Brenda Hubka. Do I have a second? And Colin seconds.
Okay, is there a discussion? Seeing none. Nancy, would you call for the vote, please?
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes. And Brenda, I just wanted to remind you that we need to be on video for the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings.
Yeah, I think Nancy needs to do something because I've got a message that says you can't start your video because the host has stopped it.
Oh, well, I had this problem before. I don't know why it's interesting.
Technology, technology.
Let's see if it works now.
I'm just having the night, aren't I, Kate?
There you are. I just had a quick question before we do the votes on the findings of fact or just a clarification. So as a commission, we have voted, and so the findings are facts are for the commission, not individual. So if I had different findings, it's really the the findings of the full vote. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I will note that I had to reread the minutes for a second because I was like, I don't think we all approved. But I realized that was approving to open and close and then vote. So I was like, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Nancy, going back to your first question, do we have? I don't want to, since what I show on my agenda is the public forum is number six. I don't want to preclude anybody from the public that didn't maybe join at this point in time and were going to join later. I'll take your advice on that one.
It's I would just want to state for the record that Erin has joined the meeting. So let me make note of 7:10. Let me check and see because I know a couple of these folks are not going to be speaking. They're just listening. So Chris Alvarado, did you wish to address the commission? Okay, Jacob Shaley? Okay, and I think Phil Workman is with
The Broncos.
Pardon?
No, sorry.
Okay.
I said the Broncos. I was making a joke.
I think everyone in our in our public is here just to listen.
Hey, Nancy, this is Jeremy Watt.
Yeah.
Real quick, Chris and Jacob are with Embry Partners.
Okay.
And then Phil is with the Parkner Group.
Okay, so they're all part of the group just listening.
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I appreciate that. Okay, Chair, we're good to move on.
Okay, well, and we, of course, want to hear from the public. So if others join later, we'll we'll check back in and see.
Okay.
Okay, great. So item three on the agenda is approval of the findings of fact, finding of fact for case Z O N 2022 dash 001, Plan and Unit Development 1314 West Oxford Avenue. Do I hear a motion to approve the findings of fact?
Approve the findings of fact.
Thank you. You have a second?
Do we have to note which case it is at all for that finding or anything?
I just said it was for the for the first one, the 1314 West Oxford Avenue, Z O N 2022 dash 001.
That's fine.
And we're this is just to start the discussion. So I need a second. Colin, did you just second?
I did. I did. Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So we need a vote to approve the findings of fact. Or we do the discussion first, Nancy. I get always get this mixed up.
Okay, you do discussion first if there's any discussion.
I'm sure there will be. Okay, great. Nancy, I'll let you call on people because you can see more people on your screen than I can.
I don't see anyone.
Okay. Seeing no discussion? Should I will call for the vote to approve findings of fact for Z O N 2022 dash 001?
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
Erin Martinez?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of findings of fact for case S U B 2022 dash 009, Oxford and Navajo Estate subdivision. Do I hear a motion?
I will move to approve findings of facts for case 1022009, Oxford and Navajo Estate subdivision.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Um, I have a question.
Of course.
Sorry, I've got to try to get to the raise hand thing. I just have a quick question because this is something else that came up. That the property notice of public hearing was given in the publication of the public hearing. That's item number two. And it was on the city's website. But number three says that the property was posted as required, said posting set forth the date, time, and place. Was that posted 30 days prior to the the hearing? Or is 30 days the requirement? Does anybody happen to know that?
It's 10 days prior.
It's only 10 days.
Currently, it is 10 days, yes.
Okay, thank. I just like that's all I want to know.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Nancy, will you call for the vote, please?
Erin Martinez?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka? Carl Adams?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
And Kate Townley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I guess too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chair Austin, because you're in the middle, I need to put you at the end.
Totally fine. I'm I'm fine in the middle. That's good. I'm a middle child anyway, so that's fine. Okay, the thank you all. And so the next item on the agenda is approving of the findings of fact for case U S E 2022 dash 038, conditional use permit for 4675 South Windermere Street. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to permit.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Seeing none. Nancy, will you call for the vote, please?
Sure. Erin Martinez?
Aye.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you all very much. All right, now we're back down to public forum. Is there anybody else who has joined us, Nancy?
There is not. Thank you for checking.
Great. Okay, if I'm not mistaken, the next item on the agenda is staff's choice. Correct me if I'm wrong. Brenda?
Okay, I have a staff situation. In regards to the last P U D we went through and notifying planning and zoning when these hearings are going to take place. I I just felt like I had to keep checking our calendar for the meetings to make sure I got the packet in time and in time to read it. And I I wish we'd gotten a little bit more notice. I mean, I got through the packet, and it took me a couple of days. It was like over 1,000 pages. But if the city knows 30 days in advance, maybe we could know. We could have a little more heads up than we got last time. That's all I'm going to say, and that's for staff. Because that was a big document to get through. I'm glad I saw it, but I had to keep checking our agenda, you know, the week ahead. You know, it was it was seven days before. I'm sure it wasn't there. I didn't see it until the Saturday before the meeting, you know, but that's because I'm used I'm having to keep going back and checking. If I have, I know 30 days in advance or even 20 days, I've got a little bit more time to get through these P U D packets.
Just so I can respond to that a little bit, and then Brian, I think, has some things too. Historically, the packet has gone out the Thursday before the meeting. If the commission wishes to change that, you just need to direct staff as to when you want it. But typically, we try to get it out the Thursday prior to the Tuesday meeting. So Brian, I think you had some things you wanted to chat about under staff's choice.
Yeah, the the main item we want to talk about is whether or not the commission, I think, under direction of council, when we started virtual meetings, we were asked to check in with our boards and commissions about every six months to determine whether or not you felt like you wanted to go back to in-person meetings. And so that's that's our check in right now is to ask the commission whether or not, or if there's any discussion on whether or not the commission feels like they would like to go back to in-person meetings or would like to continue conducting their business virtually. So with that, I'll just open it up to any questions or comments from the commission.
Michelle?
I just have one comment that we have been meeting virtually, and I frankly, from the we have meetings like the last one, I'm glad we were virtual. That was that was brutal, going to almost 1 o'clock in the morning. But I'm happy to change the meetings to in person, but I my preference would be to allow the next chair to make that decision.
Judy?
So I've not never been quiet about I would prefer we were in person, but at the very least, see, I guess it would have been brutal to be in person and public. But I strongly, strongly feel at the very least, we need to have public hearings in person. I don't feel like everybody is represented because from the public, because they can't all have access online or they don't understand the technology and they're intimidated by it. I think that's unfair. So that might be a reason to not have me be the next chair because my decision would be that we meet in person. Now, I'm not going to go against the majority on that, but I have a real strong opinion that our public hearings need to be in person. Yeah, it's much more convenient for me to sit here, but let's be realistic. None of us live more than five or 10 minutes from where we would be meeting. It's not like this is a burden. You're not driving across Denver. So I guess that's my opinion.
Brenda?
Well, I would like to remain virtual because of the last the last meeting. I'm afraid that people would have become even more angrier if they sat in that room, conference room with us and waited over two hours to speak. I also have serious concerns for meetings like that when some citizens don't understand Bob's Rules of Order. And I know that the trash meetings got to with the city council were subject to applause and boos and guffaws. And that had we had last month's meeting in public, we would have been there till 2:00 a.m. just because Nancy would have had to spend a lot of time calming everybody down. We did make accommodations for somebody who does not have a computer. They were able to go at the city offices and talk to us in that forum. So I'm a good advocate for keeping it virtual because it seems to keep the peace.
Okay, Colin? Thanks, Brenda. Colin?
I honestly think that maybe alternating, maybe having one meeting in person, one hybrid, and at least having the hybrid option is probably good for those who maybe can't make it, whether that's the public or the occasion when a council member or a commission member can't make it to the meeting, I think, having the opportunity to make it. Personally, I think the in-person allows for better discussions, better sharing of information. I think there can be a lot more discussion that happens internally within our team, within the commission itself than happens when I have to stop and not that we wouldn't follow the rules of order. And I appreciate what you're saying completely, Brenda, because there probably would be some additional time that would be taken there. But I do think that the communication that happens in person is better, and I think that can be an advantage. But I do think that we should have the opportunity for those people who maybe couldn't come to a meeting in person have the opportunity to still be able to go online to be able to provide their input if that works better for them.
Carl?
Probably the if we were being person, I'd have to be in a community room because there's not enough room in the in the council chambers. So it'd have to be in a community room, but I I think the 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 meet the hearings should could be virtual, but they need to make accommodations in the community room for people to go in there to for an in-person talk with at the hearing. I I believe there was one person, we had like, what, 20, 30 people talk? And there was one person that was in the community room at the last meeting. So we need to publicize that more, and people can go down there and they can you know, be sitting there for a while to wait your turn, but you can talk in person and get your point across. And the to to go with the commission to be in person. I'm kind of I'm kind of on the fence on that one. It can be in virtual or in person. That's like tonight. It's to have the meeting down there tonight would have been a waste of time. You're driving down there and half the time you're on the road, just trying to trying to get there. It's going to be a short meeting, so. But for a public hearing, we definitely need accommodations for people to go into the community room to talk. And that needs to be set up so that it's actually organized and and they can get their point across.
Okay. Brenda, you still had your hand up. Did you have another comment?
No, no, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Kate Townley, you haven't weighed in. Do you wish to weigh in?
Um, I I really could go either way. I like having the hybrid option for community members or if for some reason we have a really hard time getting to a meeting in person. I do like the idea of having the public hearings in person just to have more of that connection as people are providing their testimony and input and things like that.
Okay. Michelle, did you want to weigh in? Yeah, Michelle?
Yeah, I I think those are all really good comments, and if we know that we're going to have a lot of community input, like the last meeting, it's also possible for the chair and staff to plan ahead and have, you know, water and some snacks and things like that when we know we're going to be going late or something like that. But it was it was kind of nice, but I have served the balance of Michael's term when he left and a full year. So it's time for a new chair to be elected to the commission. So again, I think I'll just leave it up to the next year. That's my recommendation.
Okay, and I would just let the commission know elections are done in February, so.
Oh, I'm not out that soon. Okay, all right. I'll I'll hang in for another month or two.
Erin, did you wish to weigh in?
Um, no, I like the option of doing both. Certainly, I think Carl's example of tonight's meeting would be would be a great reason to keep the the online option available.
Okay, Brian, I think that we've heard from everyone.
Is there any other staff? Staff's choice?
Nope, I don't have anything else.
Nancy?
I'm good. Thank you.
I don't see our attorney with us tonight unless I am missing something.
No, she wasn't able to attend this evening.
Well, fortunately, we didn't need her tonight, so that's okay. Okay, so it's not the commissioner's choice. I'll just go around how I see things on my screen. Judy?
Um, a couple of things. One, I met with Brian and so one of my concerns, and maybe some of you have the same, is I feel like the steering committee, we don't have a whole lot. I'm not feeling like the people that from the community that are on the steering committee for Title 16, I feel like they've sort of lost interest. I two are not this past, not today's meeting, but the previous one. I was really surprised that there wasn't more discussion about bulk plane and parking and all of the things and setbacks and all that stuff. So I was disappointed. I talked to Brian about that. I don't know what the option is to get better community engagement. I also talked to Brian about what that process was going to be for us as a commission as a whole to really dig in to some of this stuff, because I really think it needs, we need to get this right. And I feel like that's our burden. So I want to make sure whatever that approval process is for us as a commission to go through this rewrite. I don't want it to be rushed just because people want to be done with it. So I just, that was one of my discussions. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I don't have an answer yet, but I just wanted to let the commission know is I'm taking some classes, and there's a possibility that I'm the there's a mandatory prerequisite class that I might need to take in the spring that would meet on Tuesday nights. I'm not going to know until January. Luckily, that'll be before, you know, we really get back in the thick of things, but I should know in January. But if that's the case, then I it's it's every Tuesday night for an entire semester. So I would not be available for commission meetings, and I've already talked to Brian about this as well. But I just want to give you guys a heads up. And then at that case, you know, decide whether I I would like to stay on the commission. I wouldn't be I would be out of the ability. Maybe I could drop to an alternate and we could get a replacement. But I just wanted to let you all know that that was sort of a situation that I was in at this time. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Carl, you have your hand up too. Carl?
The Judy mentioned the community engagement. Brian, is there isn't there another meeting with the the residents on the on what they want for the to have in the Title 16?
Yes, we don't have anything scheduled as of yet, but we are planning at least one more round of community engagement before we go through the adoption process.
Okay. I'd like to see more of those and and really get their their opinions on on what's going on there. Another item that Brenda had mentioned, the notification of the agenda. If like if they're doing a a hearing, so they're posting the sign 10 days ahead. Can we get the agenda at least 10 days ahead? Or I'd prefer a couple of weeks on that, really, but 10 days a minimum. That that would be good for for a for a hearing, anyway, for other things, maybe a week. But the the short notice that we're getting is people really don't have time to to review this stuff.
So just to clarify, both Judy's point and your point, Carl, we do have public forum on our agenda as a general thing, what you're talking about when we have public hearing for like a P U D or that sort of thing. Is that correct? Is that a good summarization?
An actual scheduled community room meeting with people, have them come in and say boards on up that they can post notes on or whatever, you know, just some kind of communications with the residents on what they want. It's been done before, and it was pretty pretty well done, but I think we need to do more of them.
Okay, anything else?
One, one last thing. I'd like to have some input from staff on the S K B pullout. What happened there and what do we need to do to correct that from happening in the future? What was the issues there? And what's the what's the path forward? What are we going to do in the future? Is the Inglewood going to try to buy the land or whatever kind of input we can get on that? It'd be helpful to know what's going on just for more transparency.
Can we put that on on our next meeting's agenda? Brian and Nancy?
I'll reach out to our our staff member that works on on that project and see if he's available for any kind of discussion.
Okay, that'd be great. I just I just don't want to talk about things that are on our agenda, just just to make sure the public has notice of what we're doing. So anything else, Carl?
Uh, thank you.
Okay, Colin?
I was wanting to get clarification on on Judy's question. Are you saying about actual public input from like everybody or those who are on the commission that are trying to help draft that in? You know, what's the requirement of their involvement, I guess? Maybe is the is the question?
Is that question for me?
It is, yeah.
Oh, no.
What are you referring to?
One, I was just talking about how disappointed I was in the steering committee. That was my first comment. I don't, I feel like the people on the steering committee have lost interest.
Right, okay.
Um, that was that first comment. Then the other comment, I'm fine with more community outreach. I just wanted us as a commission, full commission, to have as much time as we need to go through all of that. Because it's not like every commissioner has been at every steering committee meeting. And I want I want us, I don't want it to just go to a public hearing or we don't get a chance to discuss it and make additional changes or recommendations. Because I don't feel like we've had a chance. So that's what I was discussing.
Not every member of the Planning and Zoning Commission is on the U D C committee. So anyway, Colin, keep going. Did you have?
Yeah, I guess maybe the question for me then would be kind of building up with Judy saying, are there certain requirements of volunteering on the U D C steering committee that aren't being fulfilled? Or if they are, I mean, I I hear what you're saying, Judy, I don't know if I feel exactly the same way, but maybe just asking the question, are there certain requirements of those individuals who volunteered? That are those all being fulfilled would be that question. And then going back to the packet being out ten days early, we also have to make sure that we're cognizant of the reality that staff has to put together their report within a certain amount of time. So they've got however many days that they have to get their information together and that has to come to us, too. So it's not like that can happen instantaneously also. So I think the I don't know what the the timelines are, but I I do want to make sure that we're not overburdening our staff who do an excellent job of putting together this information and and bringing it to us to be able to to digest it. So that's all, thank you.
Um, Kate Townley?
Thanks. Um, I Judy, I I hear you with what you're saying with our discussions around some of the proposed code changes. And I'll be honest, too, with some of them, I have not been able to keep up with everything and know, like, be fully prepared for some of the meetings because there just is a lot of content. And also, I guess, thinking, okay, this is going to come for planning and zoning as well. But I I do hear what you're saying and there's there's a lot to cover. There's a lot to discuss. It's a lot. But yeah, I think we we definitely want to make sure we're having those rich discussions. I think no matter what, through this process, there's going to be a lot of, oh, I never even knew this was happening. And we have to be prepared for that, but we need to have those opportunities for the public to provide input and to, you know, get them up to speed. Because if it's a lot for us, it's definitely going to be a lot for, you know, the residents of of Inglewood. And if you're following Fort Collins, they just passed their land use code updates. And yeah, there's a lot of similar similar things potentially in there. And right now, a lot of, I never knew this was happening, even though it's been going on for multiple years. The other thing is, if there's any possible way to not have three hearings in one night, that would be super great. I felt really terrible for the conditional use folks and thankful that they were willing to stay on that long. I think we had a sense that the initial hearing, the first hearing on the agenda was going to be longer. Maybe that's not something that we can avoid in the future, but I just think for, you know, for the sake of our brains and for the applicants, that if there's any way to avoid that, that would be really nice.
Nancy, let me ask you a question. So how was it determined the order of last, the agenda for last meeting? Is it like the first P U D that comes in that we need to have a hearing and that's first on the agenda? Or how how is it determined?
I'm going to let Brian take that question.
Um, it kind of can go both ways. I worked in three different cities and some cities you put the hearing that had the most participants towards the end. And some cities you put it towards the beginning. In this instance, we felt like it was more pressing for the citizens that we knew, we knew we were going to have a large crowd. So we wanted them to get the opportunity to speak sooner rather than later. As far as when they show up for public hearings, that's something that's even harder for us to manage because it's all based on when these cases resubmit their documentation and start to meet all the requirements and the reviews that are done by staff. And most cases, they do not want us to push them back two weeks because time is money for development. And so that that there, I can tell you that I worked in a city where we had twenty items for public hearing one night. So two or three is 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 a lot, especially when there's a lot of discussion. But there have certainly been a lot more in other instances. So we we try not to, we try to avoid that as much as possible. But it is really at the request of the applicants. If they want to go and they're ready to go, we we put them on those agendas.
Well, tell me what city those are so I don't move there.
Um, that one was Lubbock, Texas.
I'm not moving to Lubbock, Texas, okay. Um, Brenda, did I think you sort of sort of, do you want to say more things?
Let me apologize for speaking up during Steph's choice. I didn't realize I did that. I'm very tired. So I guess I got my two bits in about ten days' notice. I would like that on the agenda, though. I know if staff knows thirty days in advance, they should have the packet ready by around that time. You can't schedule it without the packet. So maybe we can revisit that in the future. And and I just wanted to then, I'm on the steering committee also, that U D C steering committee. And I just want to give a heads up to anybody who's not on it and let you know that we've been steering it a certain direction. And then they go to city council and the city council steers a different direction. So we do want to spend a lot of time on it, but I I said this in the U D C meetings, it might be a good idea to watch the la the last five study sessions where city council discussed some of the stuff that we steered and so that we don't waste our time. Thank you.
I'm just going to jump in real quick and clarify. All planning commissioners are on the U D C steering committee. Council appointed an additional five residents. So just to clarify that.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Erin?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I reached out to Nancy about this before the last meeting, but I had a family emergency and it sounds like I missed a good one. So apologize for that and hope to make that up to the committee at some point in the future.
Well, you know, you can always watch the video.
Maybe I'll do that tonight.
Okay. It's gripping.
There's a way to like go in like a fast-forward mode, so you kind of hear everything, but maybe in half the time.
It sounds like it might just make them angrier if they're speaking faster.
Like I did through the whole political season, I would take, if anything, I wanted to watch on T V so I could fast-forward through the commercials because I'm sick of the commercials. So, okay, I don't have anything further. Is there anything further coming from the commissioners or staff? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so very much.
Have a wonderful holiday season. We'll see you in the new year.
Okay. Do we have a meeting on the twentieth?
We have a meeting on the twentieth?
Oh, yes, I apologize. We have a U D C steering committee meeting, but I don't believe we have a planning commission meeting.
Okay. Merry Christmas and happy holidays, yes.
I think you guys called no planning commission meeting. But yes, I forgot Brian's having a meeting on the twentieth for the steering committee, so.
Okay. Anyway. See you. Thank you all so much. All right.
Bye.
Thank you.